I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Davidson?
Ms. Renaldi?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
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 Ms. Rosen?
Here.
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 Thank you, Mindy. Board members have all received in their Friday packet the minutes from the February 23rd, 2015 Board of Education minute, excuse me, meeting. Are there any questions or discussion related to those minutes?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm moved that the Board of Education approve of the minutes submitted, as submitted, for the regular meeting of February 23rd, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Nardella, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. This evening, we are pleased as a board to honor some of our Watertown, best Watertown students for various reasons. The Watertown Board of Education first would like to congratulate the following students from Watertown High School for their Student of the Month achievements.
Thank you. I'll just add in, so that everyone knows how this is done at the high school, each department chooses recipients based on their academic achievement, their determination, their respect, their excellence, and their motivation to go along with the "dream" motto. So there are "dream" awards that are given out, which we have a few of those for this evening, and there are also subject area awards for each grade. So when I call, you're welcome, so when I call your name, you're not as nervous as the younger kids when I call their names, but when I call your name, you just come up here and we'll pick your hand. We will, we'll pause at a certain point along the way to take pictures, because I know that your parents at least want pictures even if you don't. So for now, for now, just come through and you'll shake our hand and we'll give you your certificate. So for December, we'll start with the Social Studies Awards. That's John Albini in grade 12. For grade 11 in Social Studies, Andrea Pinoni. In grade 10 for Social Studies, Cindy Yang. In grade 9 for Social Studies, Dominico Scryllo. In January, we had the "Dream" Awards. First, we have Robert "Robbie" Lawton in grade 12. High school, they get busy. In grade, in grade 11, Ben Hudabanco. In grade 10, Andrew Consalvo. For February, it was Mathematics Awards, and we'll start with grade 12, we have Angela Hughes. Miriam Hafes in grade 11. Angela Nozolillo in grade 10. Going to go back to Miriam Hafes. Good to see you, congratulations. And in grade 9, Alessandra Mayo. Also a "Dream" Award for Holly Ann Chapin, 9th grade.
Turn this over to Dr. Carnemola.
I thought you weren't going to recognize your student.
Nope. Can't do it. Besides music, besides recognition for our music students in March, March is also Board of Education Recognition Month. So I planned this well, but I had this many of you here to see the Board of Ed members be recognized, I thank all of you for being here. I'm often asked, and I now I'm just used to being asked the question, but I'm also often asked how these people get to be here with me and how much they get paid. Some people think they need raises, some people think they should be demoted, but in either case, my answer is the same, and that is that a lot of people don't realize, I think, number one, that they are not paid, they are not paid for the service of the Board of Education. You are? I want that back. You guys are killing me, I can't even recognize you without, anyway, so not only are they not paid, a lot of time and effort and work goes into being a Board of Education member, as anyone here can tell you, besides sitting here with me every second and for, every first, whatever it is, see, we're here all the time.
Twice a month.
Twice a month. On Mondays, we are in meetings on the outside, we're in negotiations together, we're in expulsion hearings together, we are in budget workshops together, and honestly, the people at this table with me spend a lot more time than I think the majority of the public would know or recognize. So I'm glad that, even though a month had to be designated for us to remember to do it, that it, that I'm given the chance to be able to recognize this specific Board of Education, because as a superintendent, to a large degree, your success or failure is determined by the actions and the attitudes and the time and effort that's put in by the nine people that are sitting at this table with you. And I have been very fortunate in Watertown that even with the fact that we have had changeovers sitting at the table, this is not the original Board, even that I started with as short ago as July, all along the way, I have been blessed by having great Board members who, I believe, have run for this office and been elected to this office for the right reasons, and they continue to demonstrate that to me, that they are here for the good of all of Watertown's students and families and community, and to work with me to ensure that we provide the best education that we can to our Watertown students. And so, just want to use this as an opportunity to thank all of you for all of the work, the very hard work and the long hours that you put in with me, and for functioning together as a unified Board, because I believe that to be the most important thing that we can do together, is to make sure that we're, we are moving Watertown Public Schools forward in a way that is above and beyond politics or question, that we are all here for the same reason, we are all here for the kids in Watertown, and I just want to thank you for that, and I have a small token. I will come on the other side of the table.
Thank you, Dr. Carnemola, for your kind words, it's an honor to serve the community of Watertown. Do Board members have any comments at this time that they'd like to make?
I'd like to thank Dr. Carnemola as well for those kind words, and Leslie, as you very well articulated, thank you. It really is a pleasure to serve everybody, and I look forward to continuing to do so.
Thank you for the beautiful pen, Dr. Carnemola.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Dr. Carnemola and all of the past administrators and superintendents that we have had, we have had a lot of them quickly, and it's a testimony to this Board, I think, that the Board has, has held the glue together while a lot of these big changes were being made in the district, and I thank the Board for doing their work, their due diligence, and sticking together and moving the district forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Any further comments from Board members at this time? Thank you again, appreciate the recognition very much. Moving on to more recognition of our students, the month of March is Music in Our Schools Month, and the Watertown Board of Education would like to congratulate and recognize the following students who were accepted into the Connecticut Music Education Association Music Festival for 2015.
Again, come on up when I call your name, and we'll take a break afterward for photos. First, we have Peter Ryan, grade 12. Kristin Vanderlin, grade 11. Daniel Gersky, grade 11. Nicholas Charlo, grade 12. Alexander Perez, grade 10. And Joshua Viltrakis, grade 11. We also have students with us from Swift Middle School this evening. Also for music, we have Sharina Manalo, grade 8. Vincent Cavaroud, in grade 7. And Grace Brown, in grade 6. Megan Gallagher, in grade 8. Anna Lee Jack, in grade 7. Isabel Sarandria, in grade 6. Lily Sky Shaw, in grade 8. Haley Zemitus, in grade 7. Lily Byrne, in grade 7. Eve Laclerk, in grade 7. Nicholas Petrazio, in grade 8. Noah Ryan, in grade 6. And Sarah Tata, in grade 8.
Okay, we're going to take a brief recess to take some photographs. If the students from Swift Middle School could come up front here to take a picture with Dr. Carnemola.
And then we'll do the high school after, we'll just, there's so many of you, we'll do Swift first. And I think Mrs. Jett is here, if she wants to come up, and anyone else that we have for music? Okay, moving along in our agenda, we're on to item F, report from our Student Council Representative, Emma Karpinski.
Thank you. At John Trumbull, Dr. Seuss's birthday was celebrated last week. Students answered riddles, pledged to read every day and night, and were read to by Thing One and Thing Two. The PTO hosted the annual auction on March 6th at the Grand Oak Villa, pedicures with the principal's principal for the day, and several other prizes were raffled off. At Polk, Terry Valero presented how to monitor the progress students receiving their Tier Two instruction had using the new assessment platform. The math coach from EdCon spent the day with the teachers from grades 3 and 5, planning activities for students in need of extra help. At Judson, $1,000 was raised for Angels for Angela. Polk and Judson families enjoyed the Beginner's Strings Concert that was held at Judson last week. At Swift, 14 students participated in the Regional Music Festival last weekend, they were selected after trying out in a competition. Swift science teacher Crystal Beers and the Watertown High School Robotics Team competed in a district competition last weekend, they ranked 5th out of 34 teams after qualifications, and their alliance placed 2nd overall at the competition. At the high school, sophomores completed PSAT lessons and will be participating in career cluster inventory lessons. Juniors will be able to sign up for the Hartford College Fair Field Trip on March 26th, and college application process surveys were posted for students and parents, and positive feedback was received. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Care to share how rehearsals are going with the musical?
Pretty well. Painting the sets and stuff is not done yet, but rehearsals and dancing is all good.
You guys are putting in a lot of effort, as always, and we're very appreciative and looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We come to our first round of public participation, are there any members of the public that wish to address the Board this evening? Yet are there any members of the public that wish to address the Board this evening?
Kyle?
Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward to committee reports. Mr. Nardella, curriculum and instruction?
Madam Chair, tonight, there is nothing to report.
And for policy and labor, the Policy and Labor Committee, some of the members met for an expulsion hearing, otherwise there is nothing else to report. Moving on to Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Lambert?
No report at this time.
And again, back to you, Mr. Lambert, for facilities.
No report, but I'd like to congratulate the Town and the Board of Education Maintenance Crews for their fine work in removing the snow and ice, and ice and ice and snow off our sidewalks and roofs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert, and I echo the sentiment. Mr. Nardella, for governance and community engagement?
No report this evening, Madam Chair.
Okay, and moving on to item I, back to you, Mr. Nardella, are there any communications to report?
At this time, there is no communications to report.
Thank you, Mr. Nardella, and I turn it over to item J, to Dr. Carnemola, for superintendent's report.
Good evening. First, I would like to, Board members draw your attention to the voluntary early retirement incentive plan. As you know, we discussed in executive session that I would negotiate this on our behalf. We have done that, it has been completed. We have 10 retirements that have chosen to retire under the plan. Those letters were due to me last Monday, and I know you had a chance to review it when I sent it home in the packet, but for the record, basically, a person is eligible for normal retirement if they have attained the age of 60 and accumulated 20 years of service, or are they, they're any age and they're 35 years of credited service, or, but 25 of those have to be within the state of Connecticut. There are also ways for proratable retirement and early retirement, which were documented in the document that came home. Under our early retirement plan, our eligible employees who are retired, able to retire as of June 30th are receiving a total of $22,000 as an incentive. They will be paid that amount in three installments, in July 2015, July 2016, and July 2017. That breaks down into $7,333 for the first, and 33 cents for the first two years, and $7,333.34 on the third year. This money is being put directly into an HRA, which is a Health Retirement Account, works like the health savings account that our employees now take advantage of, except it is specifically for retirees. So this dollar amount is actually going into the Health Retirement Accounts, it is not being paid out in a cash sum. This is what we negotiated with the union. The head of the Watertown Education Association and I signed this on our behalf, and the letters, as I said, have been turned in, and I have given the list of those names to the Board for approval this evening.
Board members have any questions?
Dr. Carnemola, on that early retirement agreement, I just want to thank you on behalf of the Board, not only for your efforts in making this happen, but most importantly, so that it is fair and just and appealing to all those that wanted to retire. In addition to that, I am grateful that it is done in a fashion, that it can be incorporated into the budget that you proposed to us moving forward, as opposed to finding out after the budget process, so I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. And to be clear, yes, these numbers have been budgeted. We worked with a number of 10 as the retirements, that was what we spoke about with the union, so that we would have a minimum of 10, we do have 10, so the numbers that I used in doing the budget are accurate. We, and as, although, without thinking it through, it may sound like when we're paying out $22,000, that's costing us money. For all of the teachers that we are paying into their Health Retirement Account, we are saving their salaries between a top step salary and where we will hire new people, and in certain cases, we are not refilling those positions, and we are saving the salary altogether. So overall, this was a tremendous amount of savings to us, even though we are incentivized it. So, thank you. This is Crowdy. Also, this evening, we have, I, for the first time, I wanted to talk a little bit about what E-Rate is, and make sure that the Board and the public has an understanding of what that means, how it factors into our budget. Again, these are items we have already factored into the budget, but they are, it's a utility contract, it's a large contract, and I thought that the Board should be informed of how it works and how we have selected the carrier that we will use. And for that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Brown, who ran that process for me.
Thank you. Just a little bit about what E-Rate is in general. Great, our federal, it's federal grant dollars that are administered through the FCC, and they're actually very smart about it, because each year, they make us go through a process where we put it out there to local utility companies, where they have to bid to get the best price, so before they give us the grant dollars, they're going to ensure that we have the most optimum pricing. And the services that are covered, so to speak, are telecommunications services, local and wide area networking. We've been, over the years, historically, receiving our grant dollars mostly for telecommunications, just straight up telephone. just straight-up telephone service. That's a Category One service with E-Rate. There's Category One, Category Two. Category One is mostly phone, Category Two is more networking services, fiber connectivity and so forth. They're phasing out Category One, because it's not directly related to students, like information technology can be. So that's being phased out, and we will receive 20% less, as will everybody else, in Category One services. But we also wanted to capitalize and get as much on Category Two services that we could. So we're looking to make improvements to our wide area and local area networking, especially with John Trumbull, which needs several access points, so that we can have Wi-Fi services and connectivity there. And we're also looking to improve our bandwidth through our wide area network services and connectivity, fiber connectivity, between all five schools. So it's been quite a process. I shared with the board in the update, the E-Rate news, that we received four bids for local area networking, but two of them were not complete. Between the two that were complete, there's a difference in the hardware that the company has proposed. One offers better range and more connectivity, so we're looking to probably make that choice. And we only had one company, at the time that we wrote this up last week, bid on our wide area networking. The good news there is that that bid is 13,000 less than what we spent this year. So we were very happy to get that. But we did receive some word from our current carrier that they also want to get some numbers in. So even though at the time this was written, we were looking to go with Digital Back Office, which would be this number-one vendor, we have another one coming in. So I think we're probably going to have another update for you, because in fairness, and of course, we want the best rate. That's what we're going to look at. And I did bring our lead network coordinator here tonight, in case you had any technical questions that I couldn't answer.
Do Board members have any questions for Mrs. Brown? Do Board members have any technical questions? Since you came all this way, is there anything that you would like to share with us? Thank you very much for coming.
Also, I have a motion tonight regarding the tuition rates for 2015, 2016. And I sent those home in the packet. I just want to be clear what that is. Every year, based on our per pupil expenditure, we have to establish our tuition rates. And so we are able to establish that after the Board of Education approves a budget. And primarily, that is used for, if a non-resident wishes to send their child to Watertown Public Schools, this is the tuition rate that that person would say. I have to say, that doesn't happen very often that I've heard of, but we establish it nonetheless, just in case of that, or in case there is a residency issue that we need to pursue after there's a problem reported. So if you look on your sheets, it's broken down. And for 2015, 2016, there are several rates, so just to point it out so there isn't confusion. We break it down by how much is spent per student, and it's per grade level also. So in grades nine through 12, for 2015, 16, it's $12,230. At Swift, it would be $11,233. And also, at the elementary levels from one to five, it would be $11,233. On the other hand, a person who wants to pay for the extended program in kindergarten, we are at $5,616. So you see, that's what that number is. Sometimes people aren't sure what the kindergarten breakdown is. So you know, that is a percentage increase of, overall, of 1.0299 is the increase in the tuition from last year to this year.
Question, Dr. Carnemola. So if I'm understanding this chart correctly, the second line, kindergarten, 2015, 2016, someone who lives outside of Watertown would pay $5,000?
Pardon me?
Yes, thank you for clarifying.
If you live outside of Watertown, because I put the two lines together. If you live outside of Watertown and you're coming to kindergarten, it's $5,616. If you are paying for the extended day program, it's the number above that, $2,536. That is for our students that go to half-day kindergarten, because we have half-day kindergarten in Watertown, and we have an extended day program at John Trumbull that those students can take advantage of. And that is the dollar amount, $2,536. Thank you for clarifying. Generally speaking, last week, we, I think we were delayed more than we were actually in school, but hopefully, that's the last of it. I spent Tuesday at Swift Middle School, had a great visit with them. I saw all of eighth grade, I believe all of seventh grade, and some of sixth grade. We also, we had a PD day scheduled last week, that, as you know, we had to cancel because of the late arrival due to the weather, and we are still looking at when to reschedule that. Honestly, I don't have a date for you yet, because that was very timely PD at the time. There were a number of outside presenters lined up as part of the grants that we've received and so on. And it's a lot of people to reschedule, so I can't just put a date out there until I know. And to make matters a little bit more difficult, we will start all of the standardized testing soon, CMT, the CAPT, and the Smarter Balanced Assessment. And I can't interfere with that testing to have the half-day for professional development. So when and if we're able to reschedule it, I'll bring it back to you. It may not be until, frankly, after testing, when we would do a different PD than we would have done right now, because, as I said, this one was very timely for what our teachers were working on. On the other hand, even though we had the rescheduling because of the weather, we did still have some of the PD we had already planned. We had our Swift Language Arts teachers do their professional development with the UConn professor they've been working with, that has been going very well, with Dr. Kaufman from UConn, and working with our Language Arts people at Swift. They are working very hard at implementing some new curriculum there. Also, the administrators, Ms. Parlato, Ms. Rockchester, and I participated in a professional development together that we got for free from our Revision Learning Partnership, as a portion of using our Bloom Board for our evaluation. They came in, and we did a mid-year check of where we are with our evaluation data, just kind of looking at the numbers and saying, what does the data show us about what we are seeing in our classrooms, about the number of evaluations we are conducting, and so on? It was really step one in that process of looking at the hard data of our evaluations. We had a very good day together last week. We've already spoken to the snow. I will say the same again. Thank you very much. It has been very trying on our custodial and maintenance staff. A lot of coming in at, I'm not the only one that gets up at 4:00 in the morning, or before that. They have mostly been here. For us to be able to have the delays, they have had to come in at least 4:00 o'clock in the morning. Every time we have had a delay, for us to be able to open up school, and I'm very appreciative of that. And again, hoping that that was the last of it, but I'll believe it when I see it at this point. Last week, I attended the legislative dinner that Governor Loy spoke out at the Grand Oak Villa. That was a nice evening, because there were a number of us from town that were business owners, people from the town council, there were people here from the Board of Ed with me. The governor was obviously there to talk about different things than necessarily concerned the Board of Ed, but it was still a good opportunity for me. I made some connections with people that night who are interested in doing internships and job shadowing for our high school students. So that is one of the things that I'm able to do when I get out there at those kind of Chamber of Commerce events. Also, last week, I presented the Board of Ed-approved budget to a very large group at John Trumbull. We had a good discussion about that, a lot of questions that I was able to answer. And I will do the same again this week. On Wednesday night, I will be at Polk at 7:00. And that is a combination between the Judson PTO and the Polk PTO. And that is where we are this week.
Do any questions for Dr. Carnemola?
One last plug for the Shamrock Shuffle on Saturday. I think because this is the last time, we will see you before then. And again, they are very gracious this year, and half of the donations are going to help one of our students at Swift Middle School, who has been diagnosed with cancer, is doing very well right now and fighting a good fight. And we wish her well. And also, the other half going to the Guy Bizzano Memorial Scholarship that a committee has established under Beth Bizzano's direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carnemola. Just on a note, in regards to your presentation on the budget last week, we have had a lot of positive feedback from the community in your accessibility in regards to understanding and discussing this year's proposed budget, and I appreciate that. And for a point of clarification, it has been brought to my attention in regards to the budget, that due to Senior Center brochure that lists that the Board of Education is sponsoring musical tickets for seniors in our community for the upcoming musical. There have been some members of the community that made the assumption, after reading that in the Senior Center brochure, that the Board of Ed was using district funds to pay for that. I just want to clarify to the board and to the public that those are personal, individual choices that Board members have made to donate money to help our seniors have access to the musical this year. And it is not district funds, it is our own personal finances. Any questions? Tonight, Dr. Carnemola recognized the Board of Education. And I would like to add a few words that pertain, not to me, but to my fellow colleagues that are sitting up here with me, and those who can't be in attendance tonight. I would like to thank each of you for the commitment that you have made to the Watertown community. You each participate in the schools in very different ways, and you actively listen to the concerns of parents, employees, and community members. I have witnessed your passion for education and your understanding of the value of others' opinions. You respond quickly to problems and are not afraid of making the hard decisions when we have to. You consistently act with professionalism and humility. You show patience and kindness in all of the work that we do together. It's a pleasure working with a group that shows respect to all of its members, who each share the same core value and vision for the school district that we serve. These qualities make you each a successful board member, which in turn helps to create a successful superintendent and school district. As the quality of our school district directly reflects the competence of our superintendent and the school board, we must continue to operate with the understanding that no organization can be better than its leadership. Our mutual understanding that the superintendent is the education expert in our school district is a very important characteristic of this board. If you want an outstanding environment for our students, we must have an outstanding superintendent and school board. Together, we all truly believe and put into practice the credo, "The students come first." Let us continue this practice and continue to provide an atmosphere that encourages growth and strive to inspire the community's confidence. I thank you for your service, and I also look forward to the continued work that we will do and take on together in the coming years. Moving on in our agenda, we have the first action item, consideration of approval of proposed tuition rates for 2015, 2016 school year. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the proposed tuition rates for the 2015, 2016 school year, as recommended by Dr. Bridgette Carnemola, Superintendent of Schools. The tuition to be charged for each out-of-town pupil attending the Watertown Public Schools is at a rate based on audited PSIS enrollment data and ED001 expenditure data for the preceding year.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there a second?
I second that, Madam Chair.
Are there any questions? Discussion? Dr. Carnemola?
Hearing the motion reminded me, I just wanted to make clear, so that it was publicly clear what that is. PSIS is the Public School Information System. That is basically our database that we report to the state about our enrollment and our demographics of our students, and the ED001 is the way that we spend our money. We are responsible, of course, not only to the Board of Ed and to the town, but also to the state and the federal government about our expenditures, and that is a yearly report that is filed, the ED001.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Carnemola. Is there any further questions or comments? Is there a second?
I second that, Madam Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to action item number two, consideration to approve the Voluntary Early Retirement Incentive Plan for certified staff. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the Voluntary Early Retirement Incentive Plan between the Board of Education and the following staff members. Carol Weaver, Cheryl Mangino, Patricia Hockes, Christine Goverston, Gary Resnick, Sheryl Kaiser, Linda Bartholomew, Laney Allison, Deborah Bortalan, and Anne Marie Downey.
Thank you, Mr. Vassanzi. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Again, congratulate all of them. I spoke to all of them individually today. I wanted to make sure that they knew that their names would be read tonight, because, as you know, sometimes people like to keep their retirements a secret until the end. And the way this worked, that wasn't possible, so I let all of them know that one-on-one today. And they were grateful to hear from me to know that. But we had some good conversations about how difficult it was for some of them to leave after so many years. But again, this retirement incentive made it possible because of the changes in healthcare costs and so on. And that is really why the majority, if not all, of the people on this list have actually chosen to retire. And we will miss all of them. I'm sure we'll recognize them at another time. But as we're saying their names now, I just wanted to publicly say that we are going to miss all 10 of the people on this list.
Dr. Carnemola, I would echo your sentiments. As I look through the list of names myself, I see many who have had direct impact with my children and many of the children in this district, and they will be greatly missed. And I'm sure we will find a way to thank them for their service and their time with our district. Do we have a second on the motion?
I second that.
Leading that for me. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to action item number three, consideration of the approval of the acceptance of a gift. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve of the donation of a Pol vault with a value of $850 for use in track and field, given by Mr. Timothy Farrell. It is recommended that a letter of thanks be sent to the donor for his generous donation.
Thank you very much. Josephine, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item M, future agenda items and Board member comments. Do Board members wish to suggest any future agenda items, or have any comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item N, our last round of public participation. Do any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Do any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move that the board adjourn at 8:16.
Thank you, Mr. Nardella. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We are adjourned.